Meeting of the City of Harbor Springs, Michigan, Planning Commission. And it's five thirty P M local time. And. Got a little bit of a reverb there.
He's listening to it on his.
Yeah, my voice is a little rough tonight, sorry apologies everybody. And if it goes, Vanessa's standing by to take over on a moment's notice. So we got a good agenda tonight. And the first thing on the agenda is roll call.
The holder.
Here.
Barry Luskardan. Is absent, Michael Bearman.
Here.
Bob Buckner.
Here.
Vanessa Warren.
Here.
Kenny Stewart.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Chip Everest.
Here.
Mark Bide.
Here.
And Annika is absent, we have one.
Great. And next thing is the approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes. The first is from. January twenty third, twenty twenty five. Anybody have any corrections or additions?
You want to take them all at once or one at a time?
You can do a motion for both of them together.
I move to approve the January twenty third and the February sixth.
February sixth.
Minutes, meeting minutes.
So if I'm not mistaken, the February sixth meeting minutes, there was. The time of adjournment was missed on that one. Item number, you should have played the second.
Item number seven. Could have a second hour, it's good.
Oh.
Yeah, we just need a quick second.
Second.
Okay, let's discuss it then.
Same. The adjournment was fifteen minutes past, but the hour's not there.
Absolutely, we'll get that addressed, I'll read look at that and put that in there like. I saw like. I watched the loss, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, alright, we have a motion and a second, we have. Brutal correction, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I'm staying because I wasn't here for the loss meeting.
Great, minutes are approved. Okay, next thing on the agenda is public comment and correspondence regarding issues that are not on the agenda for tonight. And let's see, do we have Frank Rain on Zoom? No. Frank and I were talking since the last meeting and he was frustrated, he didn't get called on last time. And I was gonna give him.
He's not a.
The ability to say something in the beginning if he wanted to, and then also just to do a quick check about people on Zoom, if they know how to raise their hands. Raise their Zoom hands and mute and unmute their mics. Let's assume everybody knows how to do that, and if not, we'll cover that at nine, nine two. Okay, alright, so back to the agenda item, which is are there any public comments on this thing now on the agenda?
Okay. Get this down to three minutes, so we'll see how it goes.
Your mic on?
It isn't.
I'm better.
Yeah.
Um, okay, briefly, I want to just touch on, on one bit of. Ben Blackmeyer's superintendent's discussion when he was here last week. And that was for about the. This, the. The episode thirty or thirty-five years ago, when they were discussing about rebuilding a new school complex outside of town. On a quick road, I don't know if people are familiar with this, but he seemed to be, he heard about it. And there was a discussion at that time, and it went to a website of the whole school board, I think. To determine how the schools should move out. When we did a bunch of rebuilding upon, on Lake Street within schools. Uh, the website was resounding in the community's support for keeping the schools in town. And I don't know when the schools first were established up there on bluff. Um, but at that time too, it was a community. Statement that they felt that the youth of this town were so important. That they're going to give them some of the choicest real estate in town to have their school and have a, a, a school experience that they'll never forget. Um, and, and this, this thing thirty years ago, when they were building a new school, was a restatement of that. How important it is to this community to have that school as a central part of, of the Harbor Springs experience. So I just, you know, want to say that that was how the community has always felt about its youth and its young families. And that that's a very strong position that I think we want to carry on through our newsroom. Okay, now. Sort of shifting gears here, the normal functions that you guys do, and I see it on the, on the agenda tonight. The site plans reviews and so on. Normally, the, the work of you guys is to approve, to, to look at. Proposed development and make judgments based on the code. On what is in the code and whether or not certain developments meet the criteria of the code. However, right now, you all have a very rare opportunity to make decisions about the actual requirements of the code. You're not constrained by what's existing in the code. But you have the opportunity to visualize new and different situations and make decisions relative to that. Uh, and, and, you know, what you come up with will have a long-lived contribution to the future best interests of the whole community. Now, the nitty-gritty of the code, and this is what I was interested in, is articles two and three, that we've decided to put off toward the end. Uh, uh, this, what I'm calling the nitty-gritty, lot sizes, density setbacks, height limits, permitted primary and secondary uses. That nitty-gritty has created the city that we know today. Because the code that we have had has been enforced for quite a long time, it's been modified. But, but it's those nitty-gritty things that make the city that we have. And it will continue to determine the course of development or lack of it for years to come. Over the years, the existing standards have severely stifled and restricted growth in this community. What growth has occurred has been principally in high-end, single-family residences. This, the result of this is we've had an overall loss of residents in the townville, as you, you've noticed in the statistics. Loss of community institutions, I'm thinking principally of the Presbyterian Church that was forced out by zoning restrictions years ago. Uh, and who knows what's going to happen with the Baptist Church down here on Main Street. And many, many losses of historic businesses that have moved out principally of the central business district. During this time, the city has also seen a proliferation of investment properties such as second homes, vacation homes, future retirement homes. And short-term rentals.
Alright, Mark, you better bring it.
Okay, all of these are driving losses of full-time year-round residents, uh, community diversity and exacerbating environmental degradation. As appointed representatives, now I've mentioned this to the council earlier this week. You guys are not elected, but you're appointed representatives of the constituents of Harbor Springs. And as, as such, we are relying on you to use your own individual personal judgments to decide what you think. Is best for the city down the road in the future, not who stands up here and makes the most noise and waves their arms and those. But what you believe to be the best decisions. Over the next few months, you face with these, they will require you to consider environmental degradation, demographic exclusivity, sustainability of community institutions. The bottom line question that I think you should be asking yourselves is, is our current course the best long-term, in, in the best long-term interest of the community as a whole? Or does it favor a small group of private interests? Or should we be changing course to better align with our master plan and rebuild a more diverse, sustainable and environmentally friendly community base?
Thank you.
Sorry about the overruns.
Alright, do we have any other comments from the audience or on Zoom? Do not see the hands up on Zoom. Okay. Alright, then let's move on to the new, new and old business. First thing on the agenda is the site plan review for eight hundred Pennsylvania Avenue. And Jeff, you want to set this up for us?
Or John? I'll get let John do that, or I'll like pull up.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning committee. Uh, the proposed project or site plan for the Pennsylvania House condominium association. Was actually reviewed and approved by the planning commission in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the project calls for the demolition of the garages that are along. Uh, Pennsylvania Avenue that are seeing degradation due to the failing private drainage culvert that runs underneath the, the garages. Uh, the planning commission did approve the site plan back then, however, the condominium association did not proceed with the project. In a timely fashion, and as a result, their site plan approval expired. So they're back before the planning commission, again with the same set of plans. Uh, again, to proposing to demolish the existing garages, replace. Uh, the underground drainage system, uh, build new garages in the current footprint, and then build a covered walkway between the garage complex and the main condominium building. And in a nutshell, that's the, that's the plan, we compared it against the review criteria and ordinance. They satisfied all of the review criteria subject to section fifty point two zero zero one. And then we prepared three example motions for planning commission consideration.
Okay. And Jeff, this is a site plan review, which is interesting because we're going to be going over the language for the proposed. Site plan review, so this is interesting for us to think about, we're going to do a live one, we're going to talk about some language that. Would govern it going forward. And it looks like we have Jared Hammond on Zoom, and I saw that name on the application. Uh, Jared, are you there, and would you like to say anything about this project?
You just.
Jared, if you could unmute yourself.
Hello, Jared Hammond here with Birchwood Property Management, we also have Dennis O'Brien. Uh, Board President for the Pennsylvania House condo association, attending via Zoom. Um, the plans are pretty straightforward, as you can see. Um, in addition to the, uh, the culvert that is beginning to rust out, um, we also found soil conditions, peat moss. Underground contributing to the significant settling of the structures and parking lot. So all of that planned to be addressed with this rebuild.
This is Dennis O'Brien, who's, I am the president of the condominium board. I concur with what Jared just reported, and it's our intention to. Perform this demolition and rebuild in a manner that does not. Disrupt Pennsylvania Avenue for the use of the police and fire department to the very extent possible.
Planning Commission members, do you have any questions?
I just want to confirm, it's the same number of parking spaces and the same footprint dimensionally, which you rebuilt, is that correct?
Correct.
This is Bob, Bob Buckner, in doing some research on this, I noticed that one of the concerns in the ordinance, the current ordinance is. Whether or not the construction will impact vehicular and pedestrian traffic. So I was wondering when you were planning on commencing this, uh, because obviously, middle and summer would not be optimal in that context.
We understand that, our plan is to, the earliest start date would be mid-August.
Yeah, this is Chip Everest, looks like the only difference is that you're building the covered walkway. Any comments about that?
The only difference from today's.
No, I think the only difference from, from what they have previously approved.
No, that was in the original.
That was in the original.
The, the only change from the original plan is the original plan just called for us to, uh, leave the. Drainage. Pipes that were under the current garages, leave those in place and fill. The only change we've made is we're now redirecting, instead of leaving the pipe, we're gonna excavate the pipe out and fill. The original plan and the current plan has us redirecting that drainage pipe around the garages.
Um, this is Michael Bearman. Uh, how long? Do you anticipate the total project from demolition to final reconstruction? How long do you anticipate that it will take?
Our plans are, hope to have construction and occupancy to the garages by mid-December.
So, um, you would start mid-August at the earliest? And, um. Finish in, um, mid-December then?
Correct.
Of the, of this tour here.
Correct. The, the idea is, you know, mid-August to late September, the temperature in town is warm enough to handle the, uh. Pouring of the cement. Base of the garage, and then the work after that would be the structural, which is. Wood structure that isn't as susceptible to the colder weather that could come in in October and November.
Uh, this is Mark Bide, um, I, I, I was on the bike. I think I'm the last one. Uh, I do remember this project, what I don't remember though, there's no intent of ever using this residential purposes.
That's correct. It's strictly garage, the store, automobiles and other items.
Okay, thank you.
Um, forgive me if I missed this the last time. It's a twenty-four inch existing pipe right now that you plan to cut and remove?
Correct.
And then the drawings, they don't quite show, but. You're going to be taking out a lot more than what's on the removal sheet from what I can see, so you're literally going. From basically almost the entire property, correct, of removing that pipe?
We are moving repipe that's underneath the existing and new garages. And rerouting it around the north side of the garages and reconnecting to the existing pipe to the west side of the garage.
So the pipe is going to be, that's not under the garages, it's just going to be abandoned, it's not getting removed?
It is being removed.
Oh, it is.
It's underneath the garage, will be removed.
So you're going from a twenty-four inch pipe to a twelve inch pipe, is that correct?
I'd have to relook at the drawings, I can't answer that without relooking at the drawings, I apologize. But it should be the same pipe width that's currently there.
Twelve inch unless I'm looking that, and I'm just wondering, we're reducing it, but yet we're bringing on more water and wanted to know. Why? And we have a whole lot of elbows too, in that pipe.
It is twelve inches.
So Public Works has looked at this and they're all groovy.
I believe we did get some input from Lucas Vander Zee, uh, when we reviewed this the first time, and he didn't see any concerns.
Oh, yeah, I saw the rerouting, it was, you know, we're going from twenty-four to twelve, we're putting in a lot more elbows. We're putting in restrictors so we can connect to the existing pipes. If the DPW is good, they've looked at it. Thank you.
Any more questions, concerns? How do people feel about proceeding with this thing?
They're fine with it.
No issue.
Around, see heads nod around the table, anyone like to make a motion on that?
Vanessa, do you have continued concerns? I see one little confirmation from D W.
I, I don't need more confirmation, just so long as Jeff can tell me that he has looked at it, he has made comments and those are reflected in these drawings.
What I can do is, um, if you want to, if you're interested in making a motion to approve site, we could add the condition or just include as part of it, that when they bring in their application for zoning approval. I will have Lucas review those final plans at that time and make sure that he is aware of what's going on, and that we work with him to make sure that. Any drainage that happens on that site is addressed at that time. We certainly have that ability as part of the application review for zoning to stress.
Thank you.
This is Kenny, had support to that as well, just to make sure that we have that issue closed off.
So there would be a conditional approval on, um. Final. Approval from.
There would be motion to approve with conditions.
Okay. Motion to approve the conditions. Okay, then we would list those conditions.
Yeah, let's, let's just double quick, real quick with Jared and Dennis that they're okay with that condition, I don't think it could be a problem, we should just verify with them. Dennis, Jared, are you guys fine with that, that at the time when we're reviewing the zoning application, that we'll make sure to address drainage at the time with the DPW?
I'm in agreement with that. This is Dennis O'Brien.
Thank you, Dennis.
I'll second, I pose a motion.
I didn't really make a, I thought I did, I really didn't, I really didn't make a motion, I was asking what kind of motion that would be, whether it would be, uh, and, and it would be one of the. Our three options, which would be a motion to approve with conditions, so I will make a motion. To approve the site plan, um, that was submitted for the. Like demolition and reconstruction of the garages with the conditions that, um, it's, it meets. Uh, the drainage meets, um, the. Appropriate standards for our DPW. So I think that's what I heard.
I'll second back.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve this, uh, request with conditions. Um, why don't we do a roll call vote?
Absolutely, Mark Bide.
Yes.
Chip Everest, yes. Tony Johnson.
Yes.
Kenny Stewart, yes. Vanessa Warren.
Yes.
Bob Buckner, yes. Michael Bearman.
Yes.
Bill Mulberry.
Yes. Vote in pass.
Okay, good, let's move on to, uh.
Commission, I'd like to. Show my appreciation for you looking at this project and giving us this conditional approval.
Great, I hope it turns out wonderfully for you.
So do I, thank you.
Thanks, Len. Alright, let's talk about zoning. And there was a big development on the United City Council meeting, I briefed, uh, members of the planning commission about that. City Council voted to suspend any work towards, uh, selling harvesting, and so that is off the table. And hopefully it removes any concern that comes from our work here. And now we can get on with the details of what makes sense for Harbor Springs and the zoning work. Alright, um, we have a learning segment first, and John McManus has put together some thoughts for us about the concept of buy, write, zone. And then he's gonna give us some background on that, we've heard about it from a number of folks in town halls and open houses and regular meetings, so let's. Riff is of what by right something means and what the implications are. Dan, what do we?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman, I just put a brief slideshow together to discuss what, uh, the. The concept and terminology of the buy, write, uh, zoning. Chuck, go to the first slide. A basic zoning format, uh, that was established back in nineteen twenty-nine is based on a community having, uh, multiple zoning districts. And the four basic ones are residential, commercial, industrial and public. And of course, communities, depending on their land use plan, their future land use plan and their master plan. Will have multiple, uh, variations of these zoning districts. Uh, for example, they may have single-family zoning district, multiple family, a CBD for the central business district, a B one for. Uh, neighborhood commercial and so on. uh, neighborhood commercial and so on and so forth. But that's basically the, kind of the framework of a, of how the zoning, uh, code is set up with to regulate land uses. Of course, these will be subject to conversation when we get to Article Three. But I wanted to explain to the community what's, what is by right or permitted, uh, versus conditional. So the next slide is a when people talk about by right zoning, they're actually talking about uses that are permitted in the zoning code. And these are uh, uses that, uh, can proceed without needing any special permits or, uh, variances or discretionary approvals primarily because they meet all of the standards of the zoning laws. Okay? A good example would be I have a single-family residential lot that's vacant. I want to build a house. I engage an architect. Uh, the architect will take a look at the zoning code relative to what the front, the rear, the side yard setbacks are, the height, uh, the square footage that's allowed, lot coverage, density, the location for the driveway, location for garage if it's detached. And if they meet all of those requirements, then it's permitted, which means they have the ability to come in, file the plans with Jeff, who's the zoning administrator, receive the zoning permit and then proceed to get their building permit from Emmett County Building Department. So that is a by right use, which is referred to as a permitted use. Uh, it's primarily designed to reduce the time and costs that are associated with a review. And the, the current code, uh, has a number of permitted uses that are assigned by zoning district. The, the next type of use is referred to as a special use or conditional use. And these are, just like it says, special use or conditional use, there are, uh, uh, special conditions that are attached to it and that also make up the review. So for example, a use may be allowed in a district, but it's subject to special review approval, which means that they have to file an application with a site plan, which we went through just previously. And everybody within three hundred feet is notified of the, of the application and what the proposed use is. And it's also noticed in the paper of, uh, general distribution. And a public hearing is held by the planning commission. And within the special use section of the zoning code are a series of standards that must be addressed and must be met. And if those standards are met, uh, and the site plan is consistent with the requirements of the code, then typically the planning commission would approve the special use. And special uses, uh, apply to the property, not to the property owner. Okay? So if someone came in for commercial use that required a special use approval and they received that and then that business went out of business and a new business came in, that business that would reoccupy that space could come in as a special use because a special use had already been approved for that piece of property. A lot of the standards deal with compatibility and trying to uh, take a look at a special use in relationship to what the surrounding properties are to make sure there's compatibility and no negative impact. So it's, it's a higher level of review. All right? So a special use permit not only requires that level of review, but it also requires the supplemental of the site plan, which you just saw how detailed those can be. So the planning commission for a special use has quite a bit of information that is submitted by the applicant as part of the decision-making process. So as a result, zoning districts usually are comprised of two different types, use those that are permitted by right and those that are special use. So scroll to the next graphic. These are then broken out by each type of general land use. So within the residential districts, you may have permitted uses and then you may have special uses. Uh, in the commercial, the same thing. You may have permitted and special. And each one of those is based on certain standards that are within the code. And that's kind of the basic format of how the regulated uses are set up. This is a chart that was in the, in the previous, in the, in the new version of the code uh, that you will see when we get into Article Three. Uh, in the current code that we're working with, each zoning district has a text list of permitted and special uses. And in some of those districts, it says here's the permitted uses for the districts. And oh, by the way, the permitted uses from the previous district are also included in this district. So what this table does is rather than have page on page of written text, it summarizes it in a table. So if someone wants to put in a home occupation, they can look and say, oh, it's, 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 it's allowed in this district and this one and this one. And on this table, it's permitted, but it's got a A next to it and an asterisk, which means it's permitted, but it has to go through administrative approval and there are supplemental regulations needs to comply with. So that's all the regulated uses are put together, those that are permitted and those that are special. The proposed ordinance actually has five different, uh, abbreviations. P for permitted, P with a small a, which is permitted with administrative review. Uh, PA with a, uh, ampersand, which is permitted with administrative review and there may be some supplemental use provisions that are attached to as well. Then you have the special approval and then you have special approval with additional supplemental regulations. So the, the, uh, the way that it is set up in the proposed code is that there are a series of reviews. So you have permitted all the way down to special use that has supplemental requirements. But fundamentally, the breakdown is the same. So if you go to the next graphic.
And John, again, this is just for illustration.
This is really, really. Yes, exactly. I wanted to show you how it's laid out. Go to the current code. Instead of tabular form, each zoning district has a text list of permitted and special use, uh, requirements. Some of the older ordinances actually also have that when you get into a district, for example, like when you bump in from a multi-family district into like a commercial, a low-grade, like a B-one commercial district, some of the ordinance may say, oh, by the way, the uses that are permitted with special approval in this district, district, district are now allowed as permitted in this district. So you've got to be very careful when you read a text or in a zoning code to really make sure that you're really reading the intent of the permitted versus the special. Because they do, in some cases, they mix and match. This graphic basically states that anything that is a special use has to go through a public hearing process uh, with notice in the local paper mailed to all property owners, which is based on the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. So the provision in the code, uh, the current code and the proposed code, whichever one you, you took a look at, they all comply with the MZEA, because that's the state statute in terms of notifications. Um, and then if you go to the next slide, uh, these are some of the suggested standards, for example. So if it's a special use, uh, it has to meet the general objectives, intent, purpose of the ordinance. It's got to be adequately served by public facilities. It can't create a demand on public facilities. Okay? So if you're putting in a use that's going to generate a lot of traffic that the street can't handle, you have to take a look at that as maybe a reason of why not to allow it. And you have to take a look at the use that's going to cause any injury to the value of surrounding property. So there's a series of standards that the planning commission deliberates on, uh, before they, they make a decision. The one thing that I do want to share on the next slide that I think is important is that when you go from permitted use to a special land use, it adds cost and time to the applicant and fees. Okay? A permitted use, they would come in and pay the zoning permit fee. On a special approval use, they would have to submit the fee for the special approval, which covers some of the ancillary costs for the public hearing losses. Plus, you have to have a site plan that's prepared by a licensed architect or an engineer or a landscape architect. So that adds cost. So as you go through this process, um, it adds time, money to the applicant and the property owner. So when people say, well, we don't want any by right, that means that everything that comes into Jeff's office has to go through a special approval use, which is site plans, uh, public hearing notices, time and cost. So that's why ordinances are set up to have permitted versus special. And with that, that's the kind of like the learning lesson on, on by right uses. So you have any questions?
Yes. So just to clarify, the, how by rights versus specially used is applied does not vary by residential, commercial, industrial and public. It's, it's the same. It doesn't apply differently to each one of those.
The special use process?
There's special use versus by right. The special use process applies in the same page district. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I have a couple of just clarification questions. Um, on the regulated uses chart, I, that, yeah, that chart there. And I realize this is illustrative. But what does AO what's that abbreviation stand for?
Is it?
Yeah, it's coming out of the audio. Yeah, it's, I think it's the microphone that Kenny's using. Kenny, why don't you just try the one by chip just to see if that is a difference?
Yeah, just what, what is AO? Now proportion?
Well, A, AO at the top was in the, in the, in the proposed code, AO meant it was in the agricultural overlay. So those were permitted uses within the overlay.
I see. And that's leftover terminology.
Yeah, yeah, from the.
Code that was not included. Okay.
I just grabbed the table for illustrations, show you how permitted and special work.
I understand. I realize this is illustrative. The other question I hear was about, um, Article Nine, Item H. Uh, I think it's page eighty-five. You just go right there. And I understand the intent of H, you know, to cause injury of value, but practically speaking, as a planning commission member, we're going to have to make some judgments on that prior to any construction.
That's correct.
Prior to any, uh, market value assessment. It's done.
That's correct.
Traditionally, is there any information that helps inform our decision on that or is it strictly, uh, judgment?
Uh, some of my experience has been that if a, if a use is, is, uh, if the planning commission feels that the use could be impactful from a value point of view to the adjacent properties, you know, in real estate, there's the concept that everybody has the ability to enjoy their property. Well, if, if the planning commission feels that a use may impact someone's enjoyment of their property, they have a couple of things they can do. They can, they can ask for a, for additional, uh, detailed information on market condition. In some cases I've seen where the planning commission has to ask the city assessor to ta- ask the question about what impact that would have on value from a, from a assessment point of view. Um, I've actually seen on some bigger special use projects, not small ones, but larger ones, where the planning commission has actually asked for a, uh, a certified appraiser to do an appraisal uh, based on the proposal to see what the impacts would be on market, adjacent area. Now, those are, those are large special use projects, not small individual lots. But yeah, planning commission should be aware that if they approve a use, it may have a detrimental effect on market value and they need to take a look at that.
Thank you. I think another thing that ties in with that is when we're looking at those things, we also have to keep in mind that it's, it's in relation to what a normal property owner could do anyway. Right? So if we're, you know, if we're eyeing something and whether or not it has an effect on the value of an neighboring property, if it's something that any property owner in that district could do anyway, then we have to be careful that we're not applying overly strict standard to them in that relation.
Hence the deferment to the zone, to the, uh, assessor.
So when somebody says they're against by right zoning and it needs to be removed completely, that literally means we're taking away property rights.
Yeah.
From a property owner.
That's correct.
So.
And adding undue cost and time.
And the cost and time. So if someone bought a piece of property and wanted to build a single-family home and there, that was not allowed by right, then they would have to come in and, um, and go through the process that we just went through.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a kind of a, a little, a, 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 an example that you can, you can envision. Let's say I, I own a residential lot uh, in town, a vacant lot, and I want to build a house and I engage Mark as an architect to design the house. And he, he can do that, you know, within a couple of months' time. All right? Eight weeks, ten weeks. He, he can come up with the design that meets the building code and the design requirements. At, at that point in time, I'm able then to come into Jeff and present the plans. He correct, he looks at everything and if everything's okay, then we move on to Emmett County and hopefully I can start my construction in August or spring. If you got to go through a special use for that, you still have to go through, you have to get the design from the architect. You have to submit now a full set of site plan documents, either prepared by the architect or an engineer with a full survey done by a surveyor. And depending on the timing of the submission, if it's, if it's, it's brought in before a week before the planning commission, there's not going to be time to do the technical review. So that may bump it six or seven more weeks down the line and you have to hold a public hearing, which is another thirty-day notification period. That person that started in maybe March with the house may not be able to start construction until the next year because of all the, the review and regulatory time frames, which then adds, you know, a whole years of construction cost to that person. So yeah. Forgoing by right and just saying, everything's got to be a special approval. It can be timely and costly to the property. And, and it removes in zoning, it removes one of the bundle of sticks from real estate. Okay? Because when you own real estate, you have property rights. And when you say, oh, by the way, we're going to remove the permitted use stick, well, you're reducing that property owner's bundle of rights. Okay? That's, that's the best way to explain.
There's one thing that I'd like to, um, clarify. When we're looking at the, the regulated use table and we're talking about the P for permitted use versus PA for administrative review. Uh, I just wanted to clarify because I, I, this was something that I did get some questions from people on. Um, permitted without the administrative review, that is still going through a review process by either the zoning administrator or the planning commission. Uh, so even if it's just P, there is still regulations and, and an application that they would have to submit. Uh, we have it structured with the administrative review. That is an actual, it's kind of an intermediary board between myself, the zoning administrator, planning commission, where there would be a, um, administrative review committee that could maybe handle things on a more timely manner, um, but still provide more oversight than just one person.
That, that may or may not exist, you know, whatever we all decide next.
Correct. Exactly. But I just wanted to clarify that even if something is up under that top P category for permitted, um, that there are still regulations that they would have to abide by at an application process to receive approval as opposed to just doing it without telling anybody that you're doing it. I just wanted to clarify that.
So just to be clear, um, the, um, administrative review, uh, does not exist in the current two thousand five code, correct?
Correct.
So, um, it would be permitted or special approval. Correct?
Right now, um, so on the, in the proposed code that we have, that, that was, um, you know, that we've looked at, we've got here one, two, three, four, five different categories. In our existing zoning code, there's really only three categories. There's that first permitted category. And then we go down to special land use approval or special land use with some supplemental requirements. Um, those other in-between categories don't really apply. They're, they're not options. Um, those other in between categories don't really apply. They're, they're not options in our two thousand and five zoning code. When we proposed the twenty twenty-four code, um, we, we took some advice and, and added those in as potential options in between. Then we can choose to, uh, keep any of those that we feel are appropriate or remove them if we feel that they're not. And I, and I think it's a, no, I, I think it's a good idea to have some different choices. Some things we may say, maybe we need a little bit more approval than just Jeff looking at it, but we don't necessarily need to have, you know, a, a whole committee to review this, um, as, as potential options.
Okay. Can we open it up to questions from the room and from Zoom?
I have a.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
On a typical year, which I understand there's never a typical year, uh, how many just permitted reviews would you see?
That's a really good, that's a really good question. And I, I can give you two answers. So there's the, there's the actual applications that are submitted for review that we then approve. And, um, in April of this year, I'm actually going to submit to you of the zoning administrators report, which will detail those. How many special land use cases we had, how many applications I reviewed. Um, that number has been reduced, I think, in the last couple of years. We've seen it come down a little bit. But projects have gotten bigger generally. Um, so each, each review, we're doing maybe a few less reviews per year, but the size and the scope of the review is increasing. The other thing that's been increasing that we don't see in that report, and it's hard for me to really put a number on paper, is we offer the ability for a property owner to come in for, let's say, a pre-application meeting, where they can bring in a copy of a plan. Maybe it's not a full site plan. They just want to do some artistic renderings uh, and kind of say, here's what I'm thinking about doing. Do you see any hiccups, any issues? Do you think that this is going to be something that could be a permitted use review? Or do you think that it will need to be a special land use review? And we can have a meeting to discuss that. And I can tell them, here are some other things that you're going to need to add to your application for it to be complete to submit to myself or the planning commission. Uh, and sometimes a property owner or, or an architect might come in two or three times or something like that. Sometimes those projects end up not happening. So even though we have, let's say, uh, I think probably this last year, we probably had about thirty-five zoning permits that were issued, give or take. Um, but realistically, there maybe were ten or twenty other projects that were discussed that might not happen this year. They might happen next year, or the property owner just said that this isn't going to work for me. I'm going to think about something else. So it really does vary.
So you said thirty zoning approvals last year, roughly?
Yeah, and that's probably broken up between, uh, let's say, uh, twenty to twenty-five that are, um, smaller projects, like somebody wants to build an addition onto their home, that would be a zoning permit. If somebody wants to, you know, put in a, an accessory building, that would be perfect. Um, as opposed to then, uh, and we, and I do try and break this down in the um, zoning administrators report to you, um, then permits for full new homes. And then obviously we have some small permits that are, uh, miniscule, like, you know, fence permits and things like that are for a shed. Um, and then we have the bigger projects, like when they come into the planning commission for special land use approval, documenting how many meetings we spent throughout the year on that.
So based on those rough numbers, we're talking eighty percent, eighty-five percent of the applications you get each year, uh, uh, by right and twenty percent required special.
And that's going to fluctuate with the type of requests that we get. Um, but I would say yes, that probably most of the requests are, are smaller projects that the community is, has been in the past typically in favor of an easier process for approval. Um, I guess shed might be a really good example. Out of these five choices, where would you place a shed if somebody wanted to just put a simple shed in the back of a residential property? Um, in the past, we have leaned towards that's a permitted regulated use that someone would just come in and request an application for me. Versus the other end of, would we want to make them do a mailing to everybody within three hundred feet? Have a public hearing, have a special meeting of the planning commission to review the placement of where a shed is backyard. I, I think that many people would consider that overkill. Um, but again, it is appropriate for every use to kind of review it and say, of these five choices, where do we see the appropriate place to put it?
Thank you. Mark, run it up.
I guess this is sort of for John. Um, do I understand correctly that when, uh, a project moves from a permitted to a special approval, uh, status, uh, there's a, a whole slew of new standards that can be applied to that project.
Yes.
So that, so that, uh, there in effect, a whole bunch of more possibilities for denying the, the right uh, to do that. That, that if, if a project goes from a by right permitted use and, and, and moves into the special use project, then there are, you know, all kinds of new criteria.
Yeah, the way, the way the state statute is set up is that if a person comes in and their use is allowed as permitted in the dis- and this would be, for example, a case where uh, a piece of property is zoned commercial and somebody wants to build a restaurant or car wash, whatever. And they submit their site plan, which is required as a commercial use. And if they meet all of the criteria in the site plan review, uh, chapter, the state law says the planning commission must approve the use. But if someone comes in for a special use, they have to submit a site plan and they have to go through the public hearing. But in addition, the planning commission has the discretion to attach conditions to the approval that they would not necessarily get to do on a permitted use. Okay, so requiring everyone to go through the special use permit process not only requires more time and the cost of the site plan, but then al- also opens that application up to other special conditions that the planning commission deems necessary as part of the review.
And, and to Kenny's point, does that include the assessment of whether it might suit, uh, negatively impact property?
Absolutely. Well, I, you know, but that is, this is a small community and you're not going to see it, but in some communities that are a little bit larger, planning commissions, when they review a special use approval, may require certain improvements to public infrastructure as part of the project. Increasing the main size from a, a four inch main to a six inch main, they may require additional curb cut or closure of a curb cut. They may require additional lighting. There's a variety of.
What if you want to prohibit a neighbor from, uh, complaining that, uh, something is devoting their, well, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm going to pass it over to Jeff because he's got more experience on the assessment side.
So again, remember, we have to take that into consideration with what a normal property owner could do. Yeah, right. Let's say for the sake of argument that you and I live next to each other. We, we both have large homes. And I decide that I'm going to come to the planning commission for special land use approval because I'd like to turn my ten bedroom home into a bed and breakfast. Right? We, we've, we've just determined through past that in, in whatever community we live in, that's an acceptable special land use, but it requires that review and approval. So part of my review, I want to make sure that I'm not negatively impacting traffic. And I'm going to have ten bedrooms, so I'm going to put in a ten car parking lot on my site. So you then have the ability to come in and review that plan. And you see the location of that ten car parking lot is in between our two homes. You have some issues with that. So you come to the meeting to express those concerns. One of your concerns could be that this ten car parking lot may negatively impact the value of your home. But the other thing that we have to take into consideration is what are the normal rules and regulations for you with a single family home? What kind of a parking area could you put in? What is typical for that neighborhood? And what would, would it really impact the value of your property? If it's all open and it's all close to the road and it's going to be clear that there's this excessive amount of parking on that site, that might be very atypical for the neighborhood. And it, and it certainly might impact the value of your property beyond a normal amount for a, a residential property in your area. But if we're, if we're buried in the woods and the homes sit back a little farther and you won't even be able to see that parking lot from the road, it might have a negligible impact. And that's something that the planning commission members would, would have to discuss. They would take into your consideration your concerns. And then any other thoughts that come up through that discussion.
My point here being that then it puts them in a position of making a, a subjective judgment on whether or not that really does impact, uh, someone's, you know, values or, or whether it's not consistent with the neighborhood or whatever. But it, but it, it opens up avenues for, uh, uh, subjective judgments. And, and the, the move from a permitted use to a special use because of its, you know, the expansion of all of the, uh, standards that are needed to be met opens up a lot of room for subjective, uh, judgments.
Yeah. All right, let's go to D L Wilson three on Zoom.
C L Wilson three, if you'd unmute yourself.
All right, let's go release his iPad while we're waiting on that.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh. That guy's back on.
Okay. Uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello, we can hear you. Could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, so, uh, it Charles Wilson, one eighty-one West Main. Uh, can you, can you walk me through the scenario where in a residential neighborhood, let's just say an investor comes along, buys a home, uh, tears it down and wants to put a duplex in. Um, what would the approval process look like?
We haven't decided that going forward. If, I guess we have five choices that John laid out there. Uh, which we could.
Which are not so talking about. Existing, they should clarify whether we're talking about the current code.
Yeah, well, you know, on. Yeah, uh, under the, uh, the code that, uh, was passed and no longer is, uh, active, the duplexes, I think were approved, would have been approved by right. So I want to, I want to sort of understand, um, I mean, does, does that mean that uh, someone could buy any home on Third Street, uh, tear a home down and not notify the neighbors and, um, you know, get a zoning permit and put a duplex in, you know, just walk me through that would work.
No, uh, I hear your question. This is Bill and, um, I, well, I don't think we should even answer that because we don't have a decision or a proposal on going forward for that. It's not permitted today.
No, that's not true.
It is.
There are sections of Third Street that are in the R two dis- zoning district. And the R two zoning district does prevent duplexes by right in the existing two thousand and five.
So does that mean that, um, the, the neighbors would not have to be notified?
That is correct.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I just have an issue with that. I think, um, putting a duplex in, uh, two driveways, four cars, um, you know, everything else that a duplex involves. I just think that, um, you know, there's a real impact. And, you know, maybe it's already allowed, but you know, in going forward, you know, I think it's something that, um, you know, should be seriously considered.
That is definitely on the list. Thank you. All right, Lisa's iPad.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, it's Lisa Nichols, six thirty-eight West Bluff Drive. I also have a question on your little chart there. I think that was from four thirty-nine code. I noticed a planned development and the multiple dwellings were both under P. And I'm kind of wondering why they wouldn't be at least P A because of some of those standards regarding streets and highways and the noise and some of the property value, uh, type issues. So I'm kind of, I don't know if they have to go all the way to special approval, but I'm kind of wondering if they at least need to be a P A. And just thoughts on that.
Lisa, that's definitely on our list and we will, um, I think we're getting hung up on just the.
Okay.
Exam period. Yeah. So, you know, everything, it's a blank slate going forward.
All right, thank you.
This code doesn't exist no more.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, so that could all change that text, that table. Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Yep. And do we, I just say if they ask, do we have Frank Rain on? He's promised to. He can speak. Frank, are you there? Just scrolling. Okay. So, all right.
Yeah. This tip, Everest, um, kind of want to circle back to Tony's question about number of cases. I, I, I didn't follow the math on that. So if it's thirty cases a year, eighty percent of which are just permit or P A, that means we have twenty percent of thirty, which is six cases a year that might require special use, rough numbers?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I mean, I don't, it doesn't seem overly onerous to me.
No.
Um, so.
It might if you were the owner and having to.
Right. You know, I mean, I appreciate the slide with the arrow more costs to the owner and everything else. You know, it's also, if you look at it from the other point of view, it's more cost or potential developer. That's the other kind of feedback I'm getting is, you know, it's a detriment to the development. So, um, anyway, I'll, I'll ask these questions, but we will be going into way more detail on the nitty gritty. Mark talks about, uh, on each day or day. Thanks.
Absolutely. The other thing I want to point out though is that's, that's with our current breakdown of what we have is by right versus special.
Right.
So if we change and move more things from by right to special land use, that ratio of eighty, twenty or seventy, thirty would shift and, and there would then be more activity at the point of.
Okay, well, uh, planning commission, do you feel like we got a grounding in it?
Yeah.
Member of the public who I can see, I'm. Okay, Everest is really enthusiastic here in the room. Great.
Thank you, John.
All right, well. Let's get on to the next step then. And that is, I think, to review the red lines from our last meeting.
That was just, uh, this is Joe again. Uh, one of the, one of the red line, uh, items was we had non-use in quotes and then we took the quotes off.
Right.
Uh, remind me what that issue was.
We had.
Define term kind of thing or?
We just said, let's make it consistent. Get rid of the, get rid of the quotes.
Okay.
Done two different ways.
It was done.
It was done two different ways.
Yeah. Went sure. Thanks.
The planning commission members have seen this, uh, in advance and had a chance to look at it. Do you have any additional corrections?
Nothing substantive. I have one correction on twelve, seven, one. So, and it, it's really, should it be recreational vehicle or recreational vehicles?
All right. It could be recreational vehicles, plural.
Everything else is plural in that sentence.
That's the only thing I had on, well. And I'm happy to make that incredible contribution to this.
Thank you.
This is Kenny. I have just a couple of things. Um, Article eleven point five, I read exactly with, where the text now stands. But I consider that a very important passage because dictates guidelines, it's a, a rule. So what I'd suggest is that we keep this, and I'm not recommending any changes. But after we finish the process of going through chapters two and three, the.
But after we finish the process of going through chapters two and three, the entire document, let's come back to this revisit to confirm that it's. The best it could be. I, again, I see no changes. I think it's great. It's just that important, I think. Um the other thing on eleven point nine, way down, we may have a typo once you set the language. Uh it might say Z B A two. It was T O twice, so you'll just have to tend to that and get. Uh on article twelve point six point one. Uh I believe we agreed at meeting two weeks ago to add uh. shall erect, alter, move, deconstruct or demolish a structure. I've seen or remember that we agreed to that.
Yeah, it's demolish state.
Run that by me again, Kenny.
Okay, we keep all the language as is, but we add in um the word deconstruct as another option for.
Well, I thought deconstruct was going to take place of demolish.
My understanding was it both would appear, but I'm open.
I, it doesn't hurt for both of them.
Yeah, okay, okay.
From the town hall meetings, I've heard that there are distinctions between those two, so I'm.
Put it both in just to cover it.
Um the last thing I have is uh twelve point seven point one. Chad, remember, we're being about this. And uh I'm torn in the language. Uh we we changed, you know, the travel trailers and all that sort of thing. But um I'm wondering if we might need to add some language about, but not limited to. Tense travel trailers, something like that, because there are other examples of somebody doing something egregious with their property, bringing in. C containers, storage units, bringing in boats, I, you know, and calling them their own dwelling. I I think you might want to just.
Why don't you run that where where you think not limited to should be?
Well, let's see, uh any land, dwellings, buildings or structures, including, and then this is where I would add, but not.
But not limited to?
Yeah.
Okay.
That protects us in the future, should somebody come up with a new creative way to do something.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
Okay, good, good. First three articles. All right, our new articles for tonight, uh start with article thirteen.
Can you give me them?
Yeah.
Yeah, can I say so?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Um when when we did the zoning board of appeals, sorry, paranoia field, briefly. When we did the zoning board of appeals um two weeks ago, I was thinking that the Z B A. Members, past members might be. Um in the audience or on the Zoom or be brought in for any kind of historical. Um conversations. And so I was just curious, um you know, we're going with with uh with John, but um. For Harper Springs, should any of those people be uh be contacted and talked to about this article?
Um I I I heard that was a suggestion in one of the um open houses. And uh why don't we just run the proposed wording on Z B A?
Jeff can run.
By the Z B A. And by every member. We've got some that are having on for a while and some new ones as well. Yeah, good.
All right, thank you.
Definitely do that. Certainly have a Z B A meeting to discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah, or yeah, get it on their agenda or just, yeah, whatever you think, of course.
Oh, yeah.
Great. Make sure that, okay, John, article thirteen.
Yeah, article thirteen is the section on amendments and severability. And we have to include basically the amendment section. Thirteen point one, in terms of initiation, application and review procedures. Is consistent with the state with the Michigan zoning enabling act in terms of how you. Once you adopt an ordinance, how it would be amended in the future. Uh and what the process would be for the review. Uh again, another planning, these amendments always all require public inheritance. So it's, this is kind of, this is why I put article thirteen and twelve and eleven, because they're very administrative and they're they're reflected primarily. Uh uh they're based on the state statute. Uh what is included in article thirteen that you currently don't have. In the current ordinance is the section on conditional rezonings, which was added uh to the. Michigan zoning enabling act and under Public Act one ten of two thousand and six. So when they redid the enabling act, they also added in conditional rezonings. The current code does not include that, but it can be used. So we incorporated into the proposed ordinance that if somebody does come in and say, I want a conditional zoning. The planning commission has the standards and the the process from.
Instead of having to go back to the reference that.
Yeah, because the uh the zoning enabling act gets into some detail, but not just level of detail regarding the process. Uh we we always include it, uh we rarely see it used, okay? But we want to make sure that if someone does come in and say, hey, you you've got the the provisions and the ordinance stuff to follow. That and then the last part is, there's really three sections. One is the amendment. Section, number two is the conditional zoning, and number three is severability, which is only one paragraph. Really what that means is that once an ordinance is adopted. If any one provision in the ordinance is found invalid, just that provision is invalid, not the entire code. And that's what that is. So legal term, but that that's why it's. And usually, on any amendment that the city does. Uh in the future, and I'm sure Jim puts this in. A lot of attorneys at the, anytime they amend the code, they always put a paragraph very similar to this. Saying that if this ordinance or portion thereof is invalid, not the entire ordinance. So do you have any questions on thirteen? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I just uh kind of give me, walk me through the thinking of my two-year expiration.
Uh for.
But thirteen point two point four, would you give it additional permit? And it's not, there's no construction, after two years, it expires.
Well, the thing with the conditional zoning is, it's a developer, developer would come and make application to the city. For the rezone, okay, and if it's approved by the planning commission, that property is rezoned. Uh to that use, but if the developer fails to take out a zoning permit or a building permit within that period of time. Then the the uh the land reverts back.
Right, I understand that, but why the two years?
Well, typically on a construction project, depending on, you get approval, then you go through design. You'd have to go through site plan, review, building permit, you may miss a construction season. I mean, we typically put in two years, Mark, maybe you can.
No, you hit it correctly, because. If if um. You, once you get something resolved, then you have to do an entire design process, especially if it's a commercial project or something more complicated. There's all sorts of consultants involved in the process.
Yeah.
So two years makes a lot of time, especially if you just want to start the cycle.
This is Tony Johnson. Chip, were you thinking two years was too long when we go to long?
But I didn't have any of the background of that. The other thing is that um the city shall not add or alter conditional zoning, even with the landowner's consent.
Yeah, under conditional zoning, it's it's not a negotiated process. The developer, or I should say, the applicant comes in. And they make the application for the rezoning. And the reason why they call it conditional is they attach to their offer to rezone. Conditions that they're going to do, okay? And then the the planning commission decision is very simple. It's either thumbs up or thumbs down. There's no conditions added by the city. He, the applicant comes in with their best, their best offer.
Right.
I want to rezone the property and because I'm going to, I want to rezone it, this is what I want to do. And I think I'm going to provide a better benefit or public benefit. It's up to the planning commission to say, yeah, we agree with you and no, we don't. And if you don't agree, it doesn't give you zone. That's the simplest version of a conditional rezone.
Right, I mean, I'm just questioning, even with the landowner's consent, thinking that if he had second thoughts about wanting to develop it, wanted to take it back to where it was.
Yes.
It doesn't matter what he thinks.
No.
Okay. It's unusual, it seems unusual to me.
It, I think, if if they don't do the project within specified period of time and reverse back to direct the record.
John, um thirteen two two E.
Thirteen.
Is this the wording issue? Um it right now reads an agreement and understanding that no part of the conditional zoning shall commit any activity, use or condition. That would otherwise violate any requirement or standard that otherwise applicable in the new zones. That otherwise applicable. I'm not sure what.
Looking for the word is.
That, is it, is it, is that what it's supposed to be? That is otherwise applicable?
Yeah.
Okay. And then thirteen two four. So my question uh is substantial construct. That's kind of subjective. Uh is there a better way to define that?
Help me, Mark, what are the, in on the uh. I mean, there's substantial completion, that's a, that's a known term.
Yeah, well, substantial, oops, sorry. Uh substantial completion is when you can use the structure for its intended use. Uh so this. How to apply to this, well, I really couldn't say um substantial, I know. I'm the Z B A substantial significant, you know, so it has to have. I was just wondering whether you could have like a milestone that has to be completed in the in the development phase. Uh in order for it to be substantial construction. But it's sort of tough, because if you say, you say, okay, you have an excavation, well, then I could stop. And sit there like Petaskis did for a good period of time. Uh you could get to the point you have foundations or some level of superstructure, you could define it, I could stop at any time.
Yeah.
And just sit there.
Right.
Due to economic issues and all that kind of stuff. So I think maybe having a little subjectivity here might be a good thing. Because that's a lot of the zoning administrator or city attorney to make a call, add something or add on.
I get it. I mean, I understand what you're saying. If it's my project, I might be a little nervous that my definition of what substantial construction is. Versus what the planning commission's definition is.
Think to be more conservative, get rid of the term substantial and say in the event. That construction does not commence, commence within the two years that it's revoked.
Well, that that can easily just be, you know, you have to start excavating. Ongoing progress or I, you know, to avoid, yeah, we we put in one footing. And four months, but haven't touched a darn thing for eighteen months.
Yeah.
You know, um but can we say something, I think so, really good points. We, can we add in something that there has to be a construction schedule submitted and approved and you have to speed your construction schedule? We won't get real specific about it. Is that too much? It is typical, so larger projects, you you know, construction schedule is required. It has to be submitted within so many times of the signed contract, et cetera, et cetera. And then um then then those have benchmarks. And so you have to meet those benchmarks. I mean, things do change in the world, sure. So you have to factor in, you know, some flexibility there, but. A construction, construction schedule is very typical.
You you could call it a progress schedule. And then a lot of times, based on um a project that goes out to bid, project schedule is on there and the contractor gets paid. Based on substantial completion, which is defined within the bid book, so. Um that could be then referred to in in this place, the schedule, the progress.
Right, it could be. I think construction schedule, uh that's the, that's the proper term. But the, you know, I think you have to have something in it that they're meeting. Um you know, a certain level of progress with that, that is being consistent, showing good faith, blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
So I think, I think there's words that can be used here. Uh like a certain schedule, very standard in in the industry.
Right.
John, you want to take a crack at that?
Yeah, and if I need some other assistance, I'll get a hold of Mark.
Yeah, because I.
Yeah, I want to, I want to reference A I A and building code terms that are known and substantial completion is a known term.
It's a known term and the the best contracts that are general conditions, say two oh one for a one oh one, that's where all the meat is. You know, for, you know, standard industry language, so that's where I would go right away.
Yeah, so we could do that.
Yeah, I'll get with Mark.
Okay, planning commission, you okay with those guys?
Yep.
All right, any other comments on this section?
I got it. This is Kenny, I have just a couple. Thirteen point one point three. Uh just, you know, we have a quotation about the time we should, they'll identify and evaluate, we shall consider, all those things are properly. And then part of the role of the zoning administrator is that person can engage outside resources. When they choose to, um we as a planning commission don't contact outside resources to get our job done in section D. Um but what I would like to do is in section D, keep all the language exactly as written and add. Uh something, I'll just spell out the words here. The planning commission may, important word, may. Direct the zoning administrator to engage outside resources, lawyers, specialists, et cetera. Provide information relevant to their consideration and recommendation. I I want to be able to say that we have the choice to have the administrator go get some outside resources. If we feel we need it to make our judgments in section D.
Let's, let's think, I'm gonna have to engage Jeff in this typically. Those type of expenditures would have to be either authorized by the manager or by the mayor and council, depending on their purchase policies. You know.
That's good to know.
Is that how you would kind?
Yeah, and we've, we have certainly done that. We were working on a project, I I think it might have been almost ten years ago. Where we felt, hey, we need, we need somebody specific with lighting to to address like outdoor lighting. And so we, you know, researched, I think maybe um language that would say something to the effect of may recommend. And that, that way you're providing your insight and thoughts and then city staff, city, city council or city manager can say, yeah. We can, we can do that expense.
Got it, I agree with that.
Yeah, we had a, we had a situation last year on a restricted bluff. Where we had to get the cert, we had to engage the services of structural engineer. But that was on that, that came from the planning commission that was authorized by the city manager to engage the services, but yeah. So Kenny, where did you?
And that was uh article thirteen point one point three.
Yeah.
Uh D, letter D.
Letter D.
Yes, there's a large paragraph there called planning commission consideration recommendation.
Right, and you, was it a number or in the paragraph itself?
Well, I I thought that you would add suggestive text to the paragraph itself.
Suggested text would be in in line with the planning commission may recommend to the zoning administrator, the.
Engage outside resources.
Engage outside resources, okay.
Yeah, to assist.
I think we always have that option, right?
I think we've cut, we've, we've historically done it as a, as a thing, but having it in writing as policy. Right, fine. For a hundred years from now, when the new planning commission comes on.
Um the other things I have, um I just want to go on record to say that. Based on all the public comments we've had, I think section thirteen point one point three. Article D is really good. Um it articulates the connection to the master plan, environmental suitability, traffic. The structure impact on utility. We've heard so many citizens say, I want to make sure that. X, Y and Z gets considered when these things happen and that language, I think, spells it out very well, so I just wanted to say that. Uh the last one is a biggie, uh section thirteen point two point one. Uh it has a typo, serve the intended use of the property such as.
Can you uh reference the line number for me?
Uh thirteen point two point one, article D one. Uh, thirteen point two point one, article D one. Serve the intended use of the property such as improvements extension.
Thank you.
And I had a. Kenny, are you still?
I'm all finished.
I, I had a couple. Things that were all um. Thirteen one point three. C. Is it? And this is just semantics, they probably don't need it. Um, with the procedures set forth in article twelve. Uh, maybe just adding words set forth. Okay, D um. Again, D, that, that paragraph that precedes all of the. The eight, the nine um. Um, considerations. Um, the last, the last sentence um, of that paragraph says. Although not all standards must be met in order to recommend approval of an amendment. When I first read that. I was interpreting it as. It must not be met in the, in order like numerical order. So, is there a way to, that's how I. Literally interpreted it and I had to read it several times. I don't know if we can just drop the words in order.
Met four?
D six. Of the same section. When it says um. In relation to the amount of land currently zoned and available in the city and surrounding communities to accommodate the demand. Are we talking about demonstrated demand, anticipated demand? Or are we just good with demand?
In this case, just good with demand at the time.
Okay. I think thirteen two one D one, we said insert such as. Thirteen. Two, two, thirteen two two. C. In an agreement and understanding that the approval of a rezoning and a conditional rezoning shall be binding upon and insured to the benefit of the. Property owner that. We dropped the word upon. Uh, I'm not sure, I'm trying to. It's line number one seventy three, one seventy four. It's actually one seventy four, an agreement in understanding that the approval of a rezoning and a conditional rezoning shall be binding upon. And insured to the benefit of the property owner. Should it not be just shall be binding and ensure.
Or two?
Is it? A binding two, uh, just, it, it seems awkward.
I've, I've seen that wording before in legal.
Yeah, finding, that binding upon. Reeks of legalese, right? I think the B we had. Uh, is applicable, uh, somebody caught that one, I believe. Otherwise. One eighty four is applicable. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, my question was regarding just um, first point over here and it was um, when you have a special counsel or you ask anyone specifically. To weigh in on something at. Is that at the expense of the municipality or is that at the expense of the homeowner?
Or the applicant or whatever.
Applicant?
Yeah.
It could be either way.
Yeah, it'll be negotiated, I guess.
Well, for example, when we had the restricted bluff. The planning commission wanted the, the tie downs to be reviewed by a structural engineer. So, uh, we had, we did the review. I don't know, I think when we sent, I think the city probably was going to pass that on. To the applicant, but the procedure is you ask for it. They provide it and then we determine if the cost is going to the city or if it goes to the applicant, depending on the information.
So is it better to actually have it not defined?
It's better not to have it.
Because then it can be arranged in a way that makes sense.
So it's not the ci, it is the city, when you say city, it's every other tax. Is how I look at it. It's like it's being borne by the rest of the community.
In, in some cases. If the planning commission is the one that desires the information. It may be a, a cost to the city, but in some cases, for example. If the application, if the planning commission is concerned. About the traffic that's going to be caused by the use, then the planning commission would. Ask the applicant to go out and get a traffic study. Then they, they pay.
Okay, I'm, I've got two, Mr. Chair. Not a fan of Latin. Um, try to make a easily readable document. So we're on um. Goodness, very deep here. Thirteen point one point three. Point D, sorry, B. One. Uh, on line number one hundred de minimis, and that's a fairly easy to understand term, but. Just wondering if maybe something more uh. Uh, less Latin might be appropriate. And I got shot down this. Oh, you did? Yeah. Oh, okay. And then this one. I consider myself to be fairly intelligent. I couldn't quite understand this one. Uh, we're on thirteen two eight violation of agreements, agreement. Line. Two ninety one.
Uh, what line are you at?
Twenty two ninety one. Two ninety one.
Of an issue.
Yeah, that's a, that's a legal. Actually, can't recall. But it is a legal term that's included in violation of great.
Okay. Yeah, that was kind of my point.
Well, it's, it is a.
Yes, that's fine.
Are you suggesting a parenthetical I T um. Quick. Definition.
I think we have a definition second though.
We will in fourteen.
Yeah. So, so that can be uh, an adverb or an adjective. Essentially, it's from the beginning, we're starting from.
From the beginning.
And I, I know sometimes that it's a pain to use these. Legal terms, but I, I think there's a reason that we do, and that's because. Let's say for whatever reason we end up in court. It's, it's a legal term that that court is going to recognize that there is already court cases establishing precedents regarding them. So sometimes it can be a pain, but I think that there's reasons that. That those languages are used.
That's fine with me, I will. Definitely remember to make sure that we include that in a definition second.
All right, last call. Anybody on Zoom? All right, let's do a time check. So it's been an hour and a half. That's uh, close to the limit of our attention spans, but would you like to go further?
What's your preference? Let's do one more, one more.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be one. Between the two articles remaining, six and eight, I'm wondering if one, there might be one of them that is.
Can be shorter?
It was much more media is, um, I wouldn't robust. I wouldn't do six tonight because it's, it's lengthy. Okay, out of the two, eight is probably the. The easier one, because they just build the site plan.
All right, can we try it?
Yep.
All right. You know, article eight, let's do it.
Chairman, like the start. I have no changes.
Um, do we want to, excuse me, Kenny, do we want to have John just go ahead and do a brief? Uh, the site plan review section in the new code. Is kind of consolidating all the reviews procedures that an applicant will go through. In terms of what is required and what site plan is required. Primarily site plans are required for large projects. Uh, for like commercial projects. Uh, they're not, they're not required like for single family homes or smaller projects. So. The first part of this is when is it required and what is, when is it not required? The. Section eight point three is the standards for site plan approval. And these are the different components. Uh, that you go through and I'll just. We didn't go through all these with, with Pennsylvania project that we approved tonight, but there were some, for example, uh. Vanessa brought up the, the drainage issue. So there's, in the standards for the site plan, there's things like. Site design, site appearance, circulation. Parking, soil erosion, exterior lighting, screening. Uh, health and safety concerns that have to be addressed. And the way they get addressed. Is by following section eight point four, which is the site plan application requirements. That need to be addressed on the plan documents. And in some cases, they have to be submitted in a narrative uh, that is with the application. Okay? So you have standards for review. Which are the, the key things that when you take a look at this property, circulation, parking. Space for emergency vehicles, but in order to get to that. We go through this checklist and. If. This is adopted. The checklist then that's in the ordinance gets converted into a. Application. So when somebody comes in for, that requires a site plan review. Jeff would give them the application and the application would actually contain. This page of everything that they have about. So it's, it's kind of like a very easy way of. Making sure that they understand what they have to provide in order to get in front of the P C. As Jeff mentioned in eight point five. That's the, that's the review procedure and there is an ability for a pre-application conference. And that's like Jeff had explained, people come in and with a kind of a drawing on a napkin. And they talk to him about, can I do this? And what do I need to know? What are some of the standards I'm going to have to look at and what are some of the processes? That's the pre-application conference. We, we offer the applicant under the new code, proposed code. The ability to come in for what is called a conceptual review. So. They don't have to spend a lot of money on a detailed site plan at this point. But they can come in with a significant enough drawing. That they can show the planning commission and the community saying, this is my idea. What do you think about it? And are there any things that I need to really look at? If I want to come in with full planning. Okay, something new. And then there's the completeness review, which is done by Jeff. Uh, he goes through the checklist to make sure everything is there. We've learned from years of experience. That we don't like applications that are. Partly complete going to the planning commission, wasting your time. So Jeff goes through the completeness review and if he thinks the application is complete. Everything's been addressed, then he schedules it before the. Planning commission. Planning commission does its technical review and then within this section, which is new. Is the administrative review committee. So on very small projects. Instead of going through the full planning condition review, which can take, depending on scheduling, thirty to forty five days. There's an administrative review committee that can meet on a more timely basis. And the way that was set up was that it would be the zoning administrator. The planning commission chair, a, another planning commission member. The city attorney, city manager, planning consultant. Would be the, the, the main part of it. And in some communities. If it's a project, may involve public safety, so we may have the police chief. Sit in on it. Or in some cases, if it involves a lot of utilities, they'll ask the D P W person to be part of the administrative review. And then there's the planning commission review and the planning commission. As in article six point, eight point six. You can either approve the plan, if it meets all the requirements, you must approve it. But you can approve with conditions like you did tonight, where you said, hey, we approve it, but. We want Lucas and D P W to verify and sign off on the, on the drainage. Or you can outright deny it. And then the last section, eight point seven of the process. Is the minutes and everything that's part of the public record, uh, that would be uh. In city hall, in the file, in case the project ever needs to be reevaluated and open. And then there's the expiration process that. A site plan review is only good for one year. We had that example tonight. They submitted that plan in twenty three. They didn't do it. The expiration ran out, so they had to resubmit it to the planning commission review again. And then. Once a plan is approved and the plans are, are signed. By the rep, by the planning commission and the applicant. If there are any modification at the time it's being built. There are insignificant deviations which Jeff can approve. There's minor amendments and then there's major amendments. So depending on how radical the project is changed. It may get circuit, circ, circulated right back to the planning commission. For review. And the last part, eight point ten. Allows the planning commission and the city to collect fees. On the review process and also. In order to ensure that the plan gets done per plan. The planning commission has the right to assess and require a performance guarantee. So that's the, that's the site plan review process. It's very technical. It's procedural, uh, but I think that it's the. The key difference between. The proposed ordinance and what's existing. Is the proposed ordinance actually has a definitive checklist on what is required. And then it also has the. Ability for the applicant to have a conceptual review, which we don't do now. And then it also has the administrative review committee on small projects. In order to accelerate the approval and review process. That's kind of a five minute summary, but that's what's.
Go ahead, okay. Thank you, uh, sorry to jump in. Thank you for that. Um, I have no changes for any of this section, but I do have just one comment. And that is, I know that in the language of article eight, there are references to uh, certain zones specifically.
Yes.
Based on what was the proposed code in time.
Correct.
And so I recommend that we make a note to ourselves in the end, we go back.
Oh, yes.
Make sure that, that we're all aligned with the language.
Once, once the. Once the districts are, proposed districts are established. When we get to article three, then we'll go through the whole code and make sure that all the districts are. Are aligned with what's in article three.
And, and I know that too, Kenny, I, I made a lot of note, um, I've. Have considered those as sort of like placeholders, just to have. Something there.
John, um, you mentioned that we have three options that we can do. Didn't we have the option of also tabling? A project?
Oh, you always have that.
A, a perfect example of both the lady's question that we had earlier and then that is. In standards for site plan approval, eight, three, A, adequacy of information. So, and we've had this come up, we, um, a couple of years ago, we were reviewing a site plan. There was a lot of detail in the site plan, but one of the things that was missing was. There was a lot of detail in the site plan, but one of the things that was missing was parking. And then through discussion, we determined we need more information regarding parking, so bring back, uh, we we tabled it. And asked them to revise their site plan to come back with more information regarding how many parking spaces they had on site. So, and that would be a good example of where we would table it for specific information to be provided to us, because we need that to base our decision on. Also something that they would be required to afford the time and energy to gather that information.
John, I have a couple of nits for you and then one that is a little bit more of a issue for me. Uh, eight, one, the final sentence in that paragraph. Uh, this is a n- uh, final decision on site plans and site plans uh, that are related to special uses, should be an S there, I think. Um, the next one is eight, two, one, A. The second from last line in that sentence, it's uh, two or more sites for detached single dwellings, I believe should be. Plural again, S after dwellings.
It's a single dwelling.
Sorry. Uh, the next one is on the table. Uh, site plan application requirements and it is. Uh, item six. So, are are, aren't we really trying to ensure that any location or any building or structure? That's within fifty feet of the property line boundary is identified?
Yeah, we could do it that way.
Yeah, cuz I mean, this, if if you do a radius, if if it's fifty feet, what if the the site is a hundred and fifty feet wide?
Yeah.
So, that one I think is more substantive.
They got the.
Okay. Uh, you'll love this one, eighteen, you're gonna throw your pen at me, I think. Uh, eighteen, it should be um, licensed architect, engineer, or landscape, not skate. Um, eight, five, one, do we have a city planner? This in the first sentence of that.
I'm the planner.
You're 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 the you're the man, okay, no, no disrespect.
That's all right. None taken.
I think that's everything.
Other comments from the plan?
I hear a a couple, um. Eight. Point eight, point three, reapplication. Um, I I just wanna make sure of. Uh. Tony considered himself a tel- intelligent, right? Um. I think. I I need a lot of training, but, okay, so. Application for a site plan review approval that has been denied wholly or in part by the planning commission can be resubmitted. Unless the site plan has substantially changed.
Shouldn't be can happen, be resubmitted, can happen.
Exactly, yeah. So, maybe I don't need that much training. Um, I also had, um. A couple of questions about, um. References to public hearings, um, or gives the types of review. Processes. Uh. So eight, eight point. Five. Okay, um, so. The. Only issuance then for a public hearing is, um, the planning commission review, correct? Um. That the procedure is set forth in article twelve.
That that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um. So someone's coming in just for a conceptual review in front of the planning commission. Um, that's obviously posted in the. Agenda, um, but it's, it's not a public hearing, okay, just wanted to clarify that. Um, and. Um, I'm assuming that this is the fee schedule, uh, which really isn't. This section, but um, for the administrative review committee, I would assume that there is a fee associated with that, correct? Because they're headed to city's attorney.
And that, yeah, and that means that fee schedule would be. Uh. Approved by the mayor council.
Yeah, I I got that, okay. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Rick, Rick Cartchinsky, four sixty-five State Street, um. Not to be a wet blanket, but, um, on eight point five point five. Um, remember a lot of work was put in to come up with a way to save. People money, um, not waste time with a planning commission, but I think if you go back and check all your. Meetings and town halls, um, you're gonna find that this review committee was one of the hot points that people didn't like. Because they had great fear that it was making it too easy and too cheap. For outside development, and and. Raven Pillage or town, so I would suggest going back over that discussion. Um, cuz that could be a stumbling block for the whole thing.
Uh, in case people online couldn't hear that, uh, Rick Cartchinsky brought up the question of the administrative review committee as a concept. And uh, that's on the table too, and so if we decide to do away with it, then the passage would go away. Um, if not.
Now suggesting changes though that we. Um.
No, um, I I think we need to. Well, I mean, we could highlight it and read something like that should say, you know, needs further review. But because we're gonna take a look at the approval process for every use in every district, that's right.
This comes down.
Right, it might, very well maybe, as we look at the approval process for every district. Um. There might only be a handful, um. Or none, who knows, won't we decide that this would be applicable? Um.
Yeah, so, we need a placeholder that says this may or may not even be applicable, so, and we'll figure that out.
But it's, it's here and it's defined what it is in case. There is, um, maybe there is, are some uses that it wouldn't be applicable for that. The planning commission decides, I guess if we. Um. Had absolutely identified zero areas in which this would apply, then we might wanna think. Why do we even need that there? Um. Okay.
Yeah, we'll figure that out. Great, anybody on Zoom have any comments on article eight? All right, uh, I guess.
Um, so, uh, Karen Ockley, rich with. Um, in the table of site plan application requirements. Um, maybe between nineteen and twenty, um. Not sure how you would even suggest to refer to it, but, um. The water resilience plan that the developer or the builder or the, uh. Applicant, uh, has referred to the water resilience plan and is aware of those environmental concerns. Um. Because the nineteen and and twenty, they sort of refer to environmental issues, but, um. Maybe we should be more specific, uh, very specific to.
Karen, are you talking about coastal resiliency?
Yeah.
We can add that in. That would go under, I would suggest under nu- under number nineteen, we'd include it.
Planning commission, you okay with that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, great, good, thank you. Okay. Well, that completes article eight. And, um, it may be a good breaking point, but we need to talk about our agenda for the next two weeks on the article breakout. And, um, so where we stand right now. Is that we have, uh, two meetings scheduled in March, March sixth and March twentieth. Two weeks and then another two weeks, exactly, and, um, we did not. Do site development standards. So that's article six, and I guess, uh, that would fall into March sixth meeting. Don, do you, is that ordered?
Yeah, in fact, when we, I prepared the schedule for the planning commission, the March sixth meeting. Was nothing but an overall review of articles one, six, eight, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. So it wasn't, it was just making sure that all the red lines were correct. I think we've done that already.
Yeah.
So I think we can, on March sixth, I'll give you the red lines for tonight's meeting.
Yes.
But then we need to focus on. Number six, number six is big.
Okay, so, you think that's enough?
Article six on the six.
That's it.
Yeah, and Jeff, we don't have any requests that we know of at this point.
At this, at this point, we have not received any applications.
Do we have a a learning segment that we'd like, or should we just get to it?
I I, well, Chair, I think, I think article six is gonna take, take you from five thirty to.
Hold me.
Set the whole beat.
Great. Yeah, no, I have a question about article six, I was trying to cross-reference between the old and the new code. With having a lot of trouble, um.
We do too.
Like, you know, how many people sit in a pew in church, how many parking spaces and all that. Is there, is there an overlying theme that that the new wording here is? More onerous or less onerous or?
Trying to make it more simplified.
Okay, I mean, like, never a spot for, never people in a pew, you know, it's all about, it's all about the same.
Yeah, so, if we try to, we try where possible, Chip. To make parking a, uh, proportion of the Grove Square footage rather than. In the old ordinances, you know, one parking space for three p- three seats in a pew.
Right.
Plus the pastor, plus three employees.
Right, right.
Get rid of all this.
Yeah.
We tried to make it more simplified, and then the other part, when you see it. The old ordinance, uh. Specified a parking minimum. So we've, we have found over the years that people hit the minimum, but then they add more to it. So you end up with more parking than what you need, which. Uses up more of the site, causes more stormwater, drainage issues, so the the new ordinance is based on. Some of the new thinking that you have a minimum and max. And you specify the parking and that's what they provide and that's it, so you don't end up with the. The Lowe's and the Home Depot parking lots, some of the restaurants that just have, like, like, like Walgreens. You know, has fifty parking spaces and there's probably only twenty people in it at times, so I mean, parking ratios have. Over the last fifteen, twenty years have become more realistic, uh, really trying to figure out what people need, not what they want. You know what I mean, so, that, that's kind of the 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 angle that we took. We're trying to make things a little bit more simplified, but, but section six. Deals with everything that somebody would need to address as part of their site plan development. So our article eight was the process, article six is, these are the things that you need to consider when you're. You're putting your plans together, so that's why it's a little bit longer.
Okay, and then John, if you could just estimate what you would target for March twentieth meeting.
Article seven and nine.
Seven and nine, and that's enough.
Oh, that's enough.
Okay. Excellent, and then sometime in March, we can talk about it, we, uh, wanna have a couple of weeks off or wanna have a early April meeting.
I I would, I I would like to go on vacation sometime.
Yeah, that would be good.
So I go for, uh, taking the first week of April off.
It's a little brave also.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's figure we're gonna do that, but it's, all right, in March. Great, well then let's, uh, let's wrap this up, any final comments online or in the room? And so, all right, good work, thanks everybody, I learned a lot today.
Thanks, guys.